I call the February 5th, 2019 regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I want to remind all present, this meeting is being audio and video recorded. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes of the regular session, Board of Selectmen's meeting of December 11th, 2018, and January 8th, 2019, as presented.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next on meeting mail, we have nothing. Appointments. Present person, I guess Julie Heeter, you aren't here?
Kathy, when I'm sick.
Oh, you're on both of them?
Is this acknowledged from meeting mail? Should that be acknowledged in the meeting?
That should be acknowledged.
That should be acknowledged.
You want me to, I'll put it in the administrators'.
Which one do you go first? Are you going to do both of them or?
She's going to do it. She's good at this.
Alright, I can do, I'll start with mine. So it's tab four. And your finders. Or you might have it already.
Oh, yeah, a second one.
So there aren't too many changes, the salaries. The changes that you see there are 2%. I know mine looks a little higher, but there was an adjustment for when I became the finance director, so that is a 2% on top of my current. And in the accounting clerk, it's a 2.2. Again, there was a zero increase for the union plugged in for last year, but I also had a change of staff, so the person who's here now is actually on step one still. So whereas the person who I left was a step higher, so that's a 2.2. The only other change in the expenses are for the audit, and that's contractual. It's going up 1,000.
Mr. Chairman, if I could. What's, I asked Mr. Dole this before, but it was kind of like a combination of a couple of things, because there are multiple budgets now, but professional, technical. Can you explain that line item a little bit to the board?
Yeah, it's just kind of like a catch-all, so you don't have to have separate lines for all these separate detailed things. Any courses that you might be taking, any classes, anything. I don't know if there's like a software or something that you might need that's under professional and technical. It's kind of like the more generic categories, so you don't have to have it broken out by little detailed things. I know like in the selectmen's budget, there were a few things that were combined into just professional and technical.
Yeah, that's right. So it's a multitude of past line items, just kind of brought together into one? And it's just easier for you to be paying bills and doing certain things out of it?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a multiple, multitude of line items that you're carrying based from and explaining it in one thing, it can all just be categorized as one?
Yep.
Alright, great, excellent, thank you.
No problem. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, so then you want to look at the collector treasure. It's tab six. You'll notice for this year that we combined the treasure and the collector together. I think that was something that was of interest to the board before. They're all one kind of big department, so for us, it seems reasonable to try to combine the expenses together as one department. And this way, going forward after 2020, we can look at it and see if we might be able to lower some of the costs, because now instead of being in two departments, they're in one. So we basically took the two departments, combined them together, and kept all the expenses level funded, aside from the ones that had changes. Well, I'll start at salaries, actually. So the treasure collector salary that you'll see here is just missing one piece. The rest of that 2% increase is in the golf line item. And then a 2% for the assistant treasurer. And then the other two positions that are listed in there are in the clerical union. So they were the union increases and then the steps. And we were able to address the longevity too, because there was a person in the budget from last year that isn't there this year.
I'm sorry, can I back up one?
Yeah.
So we're showing a portion of this salary in the golf? Is that because of some work done?
Yeah, well, that, it's a form of, it's a form of indirect costs.
We've talked about the allocation of expenses and all the other costs.
So this is one, there aren't, there aren't a lot of indirect costs that were, that I inherited when I came in. That was one of them. And I think it's just because the treasure collector's office does a lot of work in reconciling the golf. When they take the money and deposit it into the bank, then there are people in the treasure collector's office who go through and audit all of the bank statements to make sure that everything is working right. That was something that was built in before I came, so we kept that.
Can I draw out an idea and tell me if it's possible or impossible? I think we saw this, and I don't remember the line item, the Department of Public Works as well. Is it possible to show the total salary and then a deduct for the amount that's been assigned to another budget? Or is that not going to work?
Well, you can't.
So we can see what the total salary is, rather than saying some is here and some is somewhere else?
I know what you're saying, you can't budget for a negative amount. But what I can do is I can give you all of the people who are split between departments. I could give you a list of those people with the total salaries and then how they're getting them.
It's when it's split between multiple line items, it's hard to see and understand what's going on and what total compensation is. Is it possible to show the negatives, the deducts, no?
Yeah, because you just can't budget for like a negative item in any budget.
So this is exported from the budget system module?
Okay.
So it's not like we can go in and put something into the budget without?
As a negative.
So I like the idea of pulling it out separately, sort of like a back page, so that you can see what you're doing.
Or you could just put a footnote at the bottom of the budget. You can put a footnote at the bottom of the budget, so it's not showing up in the box. And just to hit on that, I mean, we've been, you're right Julie, we've been doing that. It's been in the golf enterprise budget for a long time. It's actually labeled wrong in the golf enterprise budget. It says assistant collector.
Yep.
Which we don't have positioned here in the collector's office, so we need to make sure when we do the golf course, it'll come out as assistant collector, so we're not thinking that there's one that's working at the golf course and it's really one of our departments. But it's a back charge, the town's always applied to the golf course for that, for that work, that functionality of the job that the collector's office does. Did I say that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's been there forever. I back-checked the numbers, I mean, the budget, your budget, I noticed right away it's a combined budget. I back-checked all the numbers between the treasure, did an excellent job. I mean, everything checks out perfect. I do have one question again, back to technical, professional. $20,000 last year, $30,000 this year?
Yep, so going into last year, we planned a $20,000 budget for the payroll processing. And we're going to keep that number in there, because when we're able to get onto that system, hopefully, once we're on it, we'll get a better idea of how much we're actually spending, and then we can condense that number. But that's still a really good estimate for us going into next year. And then we also, one of the changes that we've adopted is there's a cash management system called Zobrio. And that, there's an additional $10,000 in there to cover the cost of that system, which helps follow our cash reconciliation, and it makes all the management of it between all the departments. When departments are getting licenses or permits, for instance, and you're paying that department for the permit, it manages the cash and it watches it as it goes through all the places. It goes to the collector's office and then gets deposited to the bank. So there's $20,000 in there for payroll and 10 for the Zobrio cash management system.
Okay, that's excellent.
And just to, what you said about the golf with the collector treasurer, when you look on here, I did, I saw that too. So I did update that, and I let the golf committee know.
Yeah, we haven't seen the golf budget yet, but I'm just referring back to a past budget. And I noticed how it was labeled, and that label's not here in your new budget.
Yep, so if you look at it in here.
So again, I commend you for your work on the budget, combining the two, all the numbers. I got checkmarks near all my numbers, everything works out, and I followed along with you pretty well.
Good, if you see anything that's off, let me know.
Well, I haven't, I would let you know, but I haven't. The only thing I seen was a $10,000 increase, and it's because of new software that will be running. So that's a payroll issue as well?
It's like that, it's more with reconciling the cash, the cash book and reconciling it to the bank statements. But like that, we have a lot of different departments that take in cashier checks. So as we're getting new technologies with, I know the new treasure collector's had a check scanner, and she's updating a lot of the technology, and this kind of keeps it all together, and it posts it to the system automatically, to our MUNIS system, and it keeps track of it for the bank statements. So it's just much more efficient.
So everybody with data input, it's all being collectively put into the system? And then it just produces a report for you when you actually go in? It defines all the line items that was taken out of or expended from and things of that nature?
Yeah, right now, there's a lot of duplication of effort, and that leaves a lot of room for error, where somebody could mistype the number. This, like you said, it goes directly into the system, so you take that human error out of the factor.
Excellent, thank you.
Just a question, so if you go up there, get a bill and permit, they come down with a check, they scan it through the register, and that all picks up and it puts it for permit or whatever?
Yeah, so this new system, the person who's getting the check in that department, say like the building department, they would be inputting it directly onto this Zobrio soft ones.
Do they manually do it themselves?
Yeah, they would, they would do it themselves. The check would be scanned by the collector's office, which is something new that they're doing now. But the input of the data would go directly onto this software. And that way, you don't have the risk of when the collectors get it, that they type in the wrong account number or amount, and then same thing when it goes to my office to get posted to the system. It goes directly onto that software initially, and the money gets tracked the whole time on that software. It's pretty efficient.
Does it, does it do anything to the customer's check? Like say if I went into the collector's office and I gave them a check, would they give me back like, it's almost like one of the check cashing things, where is that, is that going directly into a bank account? Or is it just solely for tracking purposes, and we'll still deposit checks?
We haven't been able, we haven't launched it yet. That's a good question, I'll let you know once we get it launched.
We could adopt that module, we haven't. We scan the check, but we don't then do anything. In other words, the check stays with us.
With you, you deposit it into the bank, it's just a tracking, it's just a tracking device, is really what it is.
If you stepped it up one more, I mean, does the deposit for us, because we're scanning at the end of the day. But you're correct, we could, if we wanted to adopt the live module, take the check, send it into the bank right then and there, give you back your check, cancel, cancel, cancel. We haven't gone that step yet, and I think that's felt since suspended, we probably won't.
Yeah, I'm just asking if it was, if the functionality was there. I know the technology's out there, I've used it before, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so that's pretty much it for the treasure collector. And like that, the only other change was the bonding, which we lowered, because that's getting to actual.
What's the what, Julie?
The bonding, the very last line item. You were able to lower that number to actual.
Switch companies.
You can do the selectmen's budget, it's okay, go ahead. Really wanted to do that. She is much better at it than I am, and I know you like listening to her more than me.
That's for sure. I'm all set, gentlemen, you all set? Yeah, excellent. Is that what I do?
Yeah. Moving to your budget. Okay, so for selectmen, we have, the only changes in salary are 2% for the administrator. The clerical, there, that's a combination of Lisa and the part-time clerk. So when we did FY '19, we didn't have all the updated numbers for the potential clerk hourly rate. So this takes into account a 2% for Lisa's position, and then updating the rate for the clerical, the part-time clerical position. And then the other change we have is to longevity, which is a contractual amount.
So I guess the question is, do the Board of Selectmen want to raise?
Do they want to raise, they have 0% right now.
20 grand each? Don't look at me, it's up to you two.
The, do you want to talk about the increase to staff, the 2%? Because we've sort of left that as a placeholder in the past.
Sure. Yes, I think that's, if you guys are all comfortable with it, I think it's fine to talk about.
What do you want to use as a cola? Oh, the plate, what, the placeholder of the part-time position?
The, so we had talked about, in the past, we had talked about what we were going to give to the employees and the non-contractual employees, the management staff at Town Hall. And we put 2% in as a placeholder. And we had a conversation with Brian about, you know, we had the conversation last year as well, that that number shouldn't be arbitrary, that number should be based on the cost of living, and the real cost of living. So we both independently went out and looked at what the cola should be. It turns out, coincidentally, 2% is a pretty good number when you look at, when you go to look at the cola index. And depends on whether you're looking at the U.S. index, or the Northeast index, or the, it's actually a little bit below 2%, but 2% seems to be a, seems to be a fair increase to.
We were talking, we were probably going to go into executive session and discuss some of these things, but I've got some information I said I would bring to the board on the cola. It just so happens, from 2010 to 2019, the average is 1.36. So, because there were some zero years in there while we were giving one and a half percent. So that average over those last nine years is 1.36, and I have some documentation to back that up. Neither here or there, we also have to be responsible in some manner. So I think 1.5 was right there, nailing it on the head, to be honest with you, some years. And, you know, 2%, I'm still fine with, as of this.
We'd like to discuss that in the next session.
Yeah.
Put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Okay, scrap that, we, no mind.
Well, whatever you want to go with, I can make the change across the board, once you're ready for that number.
So no $20,000 raise for the selectmen?
I'm sorry.
What, do you want the 2%?
One 20 grand.
We can do that.
Why, do you guys get paid?
You can't get paid supposedly, which I don't think is.
It's better looking.
Well, I don't know who's looking at it, but everybody did.
The only other change that we had in the expenses was for the 911, which I believe is a contractual amount.
911?
The reverse 911.
Are we still labeled 911, or should we change?
It's code red. It's listed as.
I can change it, communication reverse 911.
Reverse 911 is what's listed in the budget?
Which we use.
We don't use that no more, do we?
Which we use today.
We still use that?
Because we had it a lot of being.
Code red is what we use.
Yeah, code red is what we change.
Did you code red it from people?
The previous one was black.
No.
Black boards.
Send it to the people in that general area.
The generic name is reverse.
What might be good is put slash code red, so that everybody knows it's pretty much coming the same line item, right? Because we still use reverse 911.
It's an emergency, but it's.
It is.
Well, it's technically not 9, reverse 911 anymore, but it still is, I mean technically it still is, but.
Whatever, Julie. Better clarification, I guess, is what we're looking for.
Yeah, I can add more to it, that's fine. Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again.
No problem.
Good job.
Yep, and if you guys see anything or have any questions, you know, we're in my office, this is the answer.
Annual business, just want to take that off the agenda right now. Sorry? Oh, the ratification of the treasure collector.
Motion table?
Take a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Annual Town Meeting Warrant Opening. The schedule for the annual town meeting warrant was presented at our November 13th, 2018 meeting. The schedule put forth opens the town meeting warrant on February 5th, 2019.
Today?
Yes, to start, accepted articles, and will close on March 5th, to give enough time to hold hearings and bring the warrant to press. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the opening on February 5th, 2019, and closing on March 5th, 2019, as presented. One question, do you think, do you think a month's good for department heads?
Usually, you know, last few years, if you've done a month. The problem is you've got to think about the schedule as a whole, being able to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I could request this, then if we're going to allow a month, we have a meeting in two weeks. You think we can get in what we can for the warrant, so that we can approve what we need to approve?
You certainly can.
Just difficult to do that when you don't know what kind of revenue you're working with. Again, it calls back to the same thing old Mr. Caroll opened up with, is.
Okay, it's actually simple, because you, generally speaking, want to use the free cash number, because it's the non-recurring revenue against non-recurring expenses. So you sort of know that your number is 1.2. So we can look at the articles as submitted and see what the numbers are. One of the concerns I have, I was showing Mike a stack this big of articles that have accumulated over the year, people that, you know, gave them to me well in advance of this opening. And so you are going to have to make some determinations, because I'm not going to do a town meeting with 46 articles in it ever again.
I was going to say, we didn't learn our lesson from last year?
Oh, did we ever, yes.
Alright, so, you know, we'll have to go through and.
Sure.
I mean, you can have discussion with the department heads also.
I mean, some of the articles are, were ideas rather than actual submissions. So once I get through and see what comes in.
I mean, there's a wish list, obviously.
Yeah, and what we're going to do is make sure that, in no particular order, I'm not going to make an effort to put them into format until we know we want to go forward. So I'll give you a list of the articles that, and I think.
Just so the board has an idea of what's happening with articles. And, you know, the next, when we do do it, that meeting's probably going to be pretty lengthy in time just because of articles, depending on.
Well, you're going to have to do all the articles that are submitted in your name, you have to do a hearing on all the articles, that then you want to say, does the board want to have a hearing on the article, you know, regardless of who sponsors it.
Correct.
That's something else you can add, but we'll have all of March and some of April, first meeting in April.
We always do all the articles, right? Because the Board of Selectmen are the only ones that can approve an article for the warrant. So it all, they all have to come in front of us.
Yeah, and I'd like to answer the question, we'll go through the articles one by one, once you decide. There's two steps, one, what are the articles? Two, what are the articles you will accept? And then three, do the hearings on the articles that you've accepted. So we'll try to run through that fast step.
Just seeing, 30 days is not a long time.
What we did last year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, number two, member from the town clerk requesting an appointment of an election, election inspector. The town clerk would like to appoint, the board to appoint Beth Kilenowicz as election inspector to assist in future elections. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Beth Kilenowicz, which as election inspector, as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's Tori Decreame Charity Bike Ride Event.
We did this last year.
The Matter Poisoned Land Trust requests permission to hold a charity bike event called the Tori Decreame Through Akushnet, which stops at local ice cream vendors in town. The event will take place on Sunday, May 19th, 2019. They will expect most riders to be in, to be through Akushnet sometime around 10:00 in the morning. The police chief and fire chief EMS director have signed off on the event. Notification forms with no restrictions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Matter Poisoned Land Trust's request to pass through on their annual fundraising ride through the town of Akushnet.
Second, we need to learn to ride a bike.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public Works, nothing. The administrator's report. Certainly, thank you, before you went in, your package is the format of the performance evaluation for the town administrator. So I circulated to that, to you that in advance, so that if you had any corrections, additions, or alterations you'd like to make to the format, that you'd have an opportunity to do that. And then if there is no correction to the format, then I would ask you to start thinking about reading it.
I, just comment, I think the format's, I think the format's fine, I've started it. Just, when do you want it? Put a deadline on it?
Last year, we didn't do the evaluation, actually, in public until about March, the middle of March. So I don't really have a particular problem with taking that long.
Alright, so just, I think you should just put out a, put out a date, we should try to get them.
Sure, I'd like to.
End of February?
End of February, so that gives us time to actually compile.
And I started, I think, I think the format's, I think the format's fine. And there's some area on the bottom for some, you know, we can make, what other comments need to be made, but I think the format's pretty good.
Sure. Just a question, just a, something like that. I personally would like to send them out to department heads. I mean, they don't have to sign them or nothing, they can fill them out. This way here, we can get a better scope on the whole town.
What, the normal review?
Well, we get a little, you know, a little feedback on, you know, if there's concerns from them. I mean, we know what our concerns are, we can talk to them, but I mean, they can fill it out, and, you know, we can look at it and, you know, look at the, you know, do our own review, obviously, but we can get a sense on, maybe there's a weakness, maybe there's a strength that he can be doing. I mean, we know what we wanted to do, but, I mean, is there, is that what the whole, all the department heads think?
Is the review for the department, or for the Board of Selectmen? Because I disagree, I don't think, I think if a selectman wants to talk to department heads and get some input, that's fine, but I don't think that we should be in and out the town administrator's review to every department head now and trying to compile information.
It's the same as us doing a review with.
I certainly don't have any problem with, you know, asking the subordinate, department heads to chime in. I have nothing that I'm worried about, or nothing to hide, so whether you talk to them directly or they submit written comments, I'm fine.
I don't think that anybody's going to say anything negative if to about their boss, because I don't think that goes very far, so I think.
Like I said, they don't have to sign it, they can just.
Lisa, Lisa, this chairman.
I don't think, I don't think it's a good idea.
Throw out there, I mean, it's a good.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's different, I mean, I think we could get, we could get some information. It's different to ask an employee to comment on the boss. I can argue both sides of it, I think you could get some useful feedback in doing it. I think you need to be careful with how you interpret what subordinate says about the boss.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, don't sign it, just, I mean, obviously, they can just come to us, not them.
Yeah, it'd have to be anonymous, I, probably, you should probably collect them, rather than have them go to Brian.
Yeah, we could collect them.
I have nothing to worry about, I'm not concerned. We can actually submit it online and have the responses.
Could I, could I suggest that maybe that the appropriate way might be for you to send an email to everybody encouraging anyone with comments to make anonymous comments through the chairman? And let Mike accumulate them? And just invite, rather than giving them the form, invite them to.
At least we get some feedback on.
Or, yeah, and assure them that they're anonymous.
I want to be respectful, Mr. Gasper's correct, you're asking a subordinate to review, they're superior.
Yeah.
And, but I'm, but I'm comfortable with, you know, I don't, I don't fear anything, so.
I'm not asking them to review them.
I think we take whatever we get with a grain of salt.
You know, different opinions, you know, pros and cons, you know.
Just as long as you're willing.
No, I'm hearing, I'm hearing what they're both, I'm hearing what they're both saying, and trying to walk, trying to walk a line in the middle, and say, you know, we, alright, we can do it, but we need to, yeah, we need to be careful in interpreting the results.
I mean, if it comes to us, we can look at it and say, just because a lot of this has a lot to do with grants and fundraising, whatever, personnel, leadership.
I don't know if you need, you don't need a motion, huh?
No, I'll act on that, it's not a problem. Also in your package is a notification.
Yeah, I'm not, just for the record, I'm not all that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I thank you. In your package is a request for transfer from the reserve fund from your department for the elevator repairs. Just prior to the inspection, we found some extraordinary deficiencies in the elevator, which always seem to come up with a surprise. So we got a $4,020 bill on the two elevators, so consequently, that stripped my budget.
This one that ODM ever uses?
Not this one, but the two.
There were two others?
One out here and one in Parting Ways.
Oh, Parting Ways, too.
Okay, and the, one of the requirements was to have a hard-wired smoke detector in the elevator. So that hadn't been done before, so that was part of the bills. And then, of course, some mechanical changes, one of the, the door wasn't closing properly on this one, so that had to be fixed. So we certainly didn't budget for that, so.
Do you need a motion in that?
This is more advice and consent, I mean, because I'm putting it into the finance committee in your name. So I don't expect any opposition. You know, I would say if you don't like it, you tell me, but.
Say no, we'll make one to fix it.
I didn't really have a choice, so.
I did look at all, I mean, I see that they came back a few different days, and then they had to come back on the next day to do a test, which, you know, they charge a pretty good amount of money for, but how much money do we spend on elevator repairs every year?
I can go back for the past couple of years now, let you know.
I seem to have a recollection that we spent.
It's probably around, I want to say 10,000, at least.
What else do you do?
I mean, you got to have them.
We have to have it.
How much is it?
The new elevator?
What's that?
How much is it?
1,000? Hundred thousand?
At least, not more.
For an elevator, two floors?
Yeah.
Wow.
They would never approve the elevators we have now. You'd have to go to the, these are called actually lifts, not elevators. You'd have to go to a full elevator if I replace them. So, it, it isn't inexpensive. And then, you know, the difference between the lift and the elevator is speed and the amount of weight and having a telephone in the elevator and all that kind of stuff.
This is only like a one person, right?
This is one, two person?
Yeah, you can get it.
Let's just say you're not gonna do a crowd. Because it actually slows the lift down dramatically, so.
Just going up, not coming down.
Yeah.
You don't even call it an elevator.
Yeah, but we want to call it a lift, cause that's more appropriate. Also submitted in your package and, and some correspondence, we received a letter from Charlene Carrera, uh, who was questioning the, her desire to implement the senior tax abatement work program. Um, this was passed by town meeting many years ago, uh, but has not been implemented or funded. And she's looking to move that along. Um, the concern I have for this, and we should probably put this on the agenda for the next meeting, so I don't need to go into too much detail, is if you go forward with this, there would be income um, restrictions